Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Okay, declare quorum. Next, approval of the minutes of meeting, a regular meeting, June 11th, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next is report. Well, do we want to skip and we can do the presentation first. We'll go to G. And let H.R. Green take over.
Okay. In front of you tonight is a presentation from H.R. Green talking about the Veterans Park and the wastewater treatment plant landscape improvements. Back in CIP time, we had discussed doing some new landscaping improvements to Veterans Park, and we have worked with H.R. Green to come up with a design plan. It's been, they met with Streetscape on the first of June, got their ideas and thoughts, and now are coming forward with a couple of different ideas on how we can do some landscaping improvements down there at the treatment plant in the Veterans Park area. So this is Phil with H.R. Green, and he will start the presentation.
Thank you, Matt. And as Matt said, we met with Streetscape Committee and had some good discussion and feedback from them. And tonight, we're here looking for some decisions, hopefully, and some direction, because after this, we'll go to construction documents, and then out for bid, hopefully to construct some of these improvements, depending what you decide, in September and October. So that's kind of the overall plan. I'll try to keep this brief. I know you have a lot on your agenda, so I'll kind of go through it pretty quickly, but obviously stop me if you have questions, and then at the end, I can answer questions as well. One of the focus of this park was the medallions, and as you'll see, that's one of the more costly items that, you know, hopefully you guys can provide some direction tonight on what to do with those. We have a range from very small amount to large amount. So that's one of the big focuses of this presentation. Around the actual plaza itself, we're showing some landscaping improvements and things like that, and they certainly have a cost to them. But as I'm going to point out to you, is the things that are maybe the most costly and the things that are maybe you get the most bang for your buck for not a lot of cost. So hopefully you'll see some of that. The plant palette, I'm just going to flip through really quickly, and we're not going to spend much time on that. The budget, we were told to aim for 125 to 155. And I'll say, as we were going through this, it was very challenging to get to that to, we heard a lot of wants, a lot of desires, which is what you want to start out with, and they try to refine down to get that in the budget. And it was challenging primarily because these medallions are costing a fair amount, okay? Also irrigation is something that we show in all the alternatives, and the reason for that is you don't want to put a lot of landscape in and not irrigate it, because it'll just die long-term, or you don't want your public works, I don't think, out there watering all the time. Okay, so we'll go through some of that as well. But some of the alternatives take it above the 125 and 155 range, so it's a matter of what do you want to do, what do you want to eliminate, okay? So here's the overall plan, and I just want to point out a couple of things. One of the big parts of the discussion, as I said, is the medallions. And we're talking about either put them right here on this wall or over in here. And I'll say, from the Streetscape Committee discussion, the consensus was more to put them on this back wall there, okay? And I'll go through the reasons, the positives and the negatives on that. Otherwise, a lot of the landscape improvements are occurring right through here, and each of those planners representing the five armed services. As Matt said, part of the, you know, improvements from the wastewater treatment plant have been ongoing, obviously, and we were about ready to put in the landscape when all this came up. So what we did was, is about 44,000, I think it was, Matt, that we put on hold and just kind of held that amount of money and that landscape from going in, okay? So what you're going to see as I go through this is, a lot of that landscape was already going in, and we just modified it, maybe upgraded it a little bit. And then you're going to see above and beyond that original amount, okay? So that's kind of how that came together. Now, I flipped this up first. We're going to come back, and the last slide is this again, okay? But I just wanted briefly point this out, because it's going to be very important as I go through here. What you'll see is I have this base column where we're trying to hit that budget of 150. Then we have alternative A and alternative B. Obviously, you look, alternative B is getting way up there in cost. I'm not expecting you guys to probably pick that. But what you'll see as we go through here, those are different alternatives of the different elements to be able to pick from and choose from. So I'm not saying, you know, go with 361,000. I'm saying, if you did everything you could possibly do, that's how much it would cost. But I understand, we're going to be cutting some, keeping some things, okay? First of all, with the medallions, okay? On the back wall here, you can see it's only about six feet tall, just a little bit. So the big discussion of the Streetscape Committee was, if we're going to do these medallions, maybe the best spot is to do them on this wall and to have them about three foot. The reason why that dimension is important, if we start going to five-foot and six-foot bigger dimensions, the cost just really goes up really high, okay? So it's kind of like the consensus was, let's go with smaller, put them on this back wall. They're very visible from the plaza in here, and you save a lot of money, but still have the impact of medallions. So that was kind of some of the consensus that came out of the Streetscape Committee. Now, I'm going to flip through some of the different options, okay, just very quickly. Addison Fire Department District did this. Art, that's where he took those.
Correct.
In Addison, and they're made out of aluminum with vinyl, and they actually paint them as well, okay? This is probably, we had to, you know, after all of our research, this is one of the more cost-effective, long-term longevity for the medallions. So this is one of the, I think, one of the better things that has risen out of this research, okay? So that's one way to go, about 14,700 for all five, okay? If you go to like a cast bronze, solid cast bronze, which that was originally what some of the thinking was, if you stay at a three-foot dimension, you can give for about 20,000, okay? As soon as you go above that, they have to custom mold everything, and the cost just goes way up. So again, just keep that in mind as you make that decision. Now, much more affordable option is to go with these cast stone materials. Again, some of these, the reason why this price is down there so much is, they already have these molds in place. Alls they have to do is pour the stone, and you go with what they have, okay? So the cost came down a lot on this particular option. Disadvantage, you say, well, what, you know, what's the disadvantage? Well, I'm going to say, you know, long-term, they may not hold up as good as some of the other things. Okay, that would probably be one reason. You're also limited on the color. You can only just put one color across, whereas like that aluminum vinyl can be multicolored and really pop, have a lot of, you know, really pop out on the wall. So that's one of the disadvantages, but obviously much more affordable. There's also these chromocast materials that look like bronze. I don't want to call them cheap, but they're cheaper than a, you know, full cast bronze. But you save a lot of money, and they still can look nice as well. So those are some of the options on the medallions. Alternative B was to possibly put them on the round curved wall, and here, I put a map up here. You look over in this location here, where that wall is curved. We talked about putting them there originally. The drawback to that is a couple of things. One is to uplight them. We, you know, this is all can potentially get flooded in here, so we can't put any lighting down there. So we had to come over the top of the wall. So that was going to be somewhat of a challenge. Also, being a curved wall the whole way, if you have a cast, you can't fit it on a curved wall. We're going to have to get a custom cast to curve it a little bit. So seems like a minor thing, but it actually just really, you know, costs us two to three times. So little bit of challenge when you come over here on this side, okay? The advantage is very visible from Irving Park, okay? When you're driving by, you're going to be able to see those, particularly at night, they would be lit up. I think it would be a fantastic scene as you drove by there. You'd see these lights on there. The medallions would be all lit up, and be very visible from the road, okay? So that's the advantage. Disadvantage is a lot higher cost, harder to construct, and things like that. I'm not going to go through all these, just the point is, which I've kind of already made, is that if we go to the larger medallions, the cost goes up significantly, okay? So that's the point on that slide. If we light these from above with some of these, what I call bullet lights, they basically come over the wall and shine onto these, very nice clean look. They will look awesome. Disadvantages there, the cost a fair amount, okay? If we go on that back wall that I was talking about earlier, then we have the potential to uplight from the ground, so you would potentially save some money, okay?
Can we, Dr. Merson, has a question?
Regarding the lighting on the back wall.
Yes.
Just an idea that kind of popped into my head earlier. So you're talking about the lighting, and usually when we have the, like, the Veterans Memorial or Memorial Day, we put flags up and whatnot. Is there a possibility, and I'm not even sure how it would look, if we had the flagpoles behind the wall, behind each medallion, had a flag of each branch of service, and the lights would be on the flagpole, lighting the top and the bottom?
Actually, that kind of idea was brought up at Streetscape to either put them, you know, flags in front or behind type of a thing. And I think that's a great idea, first of all.
Maybe that's where I heard it.
Well, maybe. Someone had mentioned that at that meeting, and I think that's a great idea, in that, you know, they don't cost a ton to do, unlike some of these other items that we're doing. So, you know, if you guys all want to head in that direction, I think it's a great idea. And then what you would do is, is you would put lighting on the ground and uplight everything, okay, the medallions and the flags, which again, would be more affordable than going over the walls and things like that, I was saying. So, no, I think that would be a great addition. Okay, so the big, another big cost, yeah, oh, go ahead.
Quick question.
Yeah, sure.
With the vinyl sign that you mentioned, would that be visible from Irving Park if it was lit up at night?
If it was on the back wall or either one?
On the back wall, excuse me.
You know, my opinion is not very well, okay? Even today, I drove by it again. I've been a million times, and I just, again, was kind of driving by it, looking, and, you know, we're going to remove some of the trees out along Irving Park, okay, which will help. But I still don't think they'll be greatly visible. I think you might be able to see a window or peek of them, but it's not going to be greatly visible, would be my thought on that.
Alderman Jacob.
I just had one comment about, you know, which wall to put it on. I mean, there are a lot of people that, when I tell them Veterans Memorial, they like have no clue where it's at. So I really think somehow we have to let people know, and even when they drive by, and there's people that have told me, I drive by there every day, but, you know, I've never seen it. I've never paid attention. So maybe even a sign or something, you know, so people know more about it.
I was just going to say, going back, let me go real quick, because to that point, it's a little off this map, but when you drive by, you know, right down in here, the wall gets fairly close to Irving Park, and as you saw, there's pretty good expanse there. And we had some discussion, I think we made some suggestions, of possibly putting either, yeah, the name of the park, or city of Wooddale, or something there would really stand out and look fantastic. So maybe it says City of Wooddale, Veterans Park there. I, you know, I don't know, just something to think about. But that wall is very, very visible, as you guys probably know, as you drive by it in that location. Okay. When I get to the cost, you'll see this kind of line item out. 34,000, okay, is a pretty big number, I realize, for electrical and lighting. But the reason it's that cost is we are replacing all, if you decide to do this, replacing all the ballards in the plaza that are already pretty beat up, and some I don't even know if they all work particularly. They look like some of them might not even work, but pretty beat up, probably need to replace or should be replaced at some point. And we would do ballards that match some of the lighting that, you know, those lights right there on that bridge right next door to the park. There's actually, I think, four or five of those lights there, and I know you use the Prairie style theme throughout, so throughout the city. So the lights are a smaller percentage of the actual cost, because you have to, you know, all, you know, it's electrical, there's a lot to it, and a lot of those lines probably would have to be replaced or upgraded. So that's why, if the cost looks, you know, out of whack for you, it's because of everything else that goes along with putting that lighting in, okay? Irrigation, I'm just going to sum it up and say, we're irrigating the main core areas, and that's it. We're not going any further than what we recommend. And the alternative A and B options, we are talking about irrigating the areas in front of the wall and doing a lot more landscaping over there, and then, a little off the screen there, but down in here, a little extra. So, yeah, I guess that's the main thing. I could go into a lot of detail on that, but we're recommending a minimum, no matter what you do, is to irrigate the areas in blue.
Okay. Go ahead, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
The irrigation, you aren't looking at putting a whole new water main in there. You're looking at coming off our treatment plant that's where you've been treated.
Yeah.
Tap into our, like.
We haven't yet got to what all that entails and costs, but we will.
That's fine.
Yeah. Site furnishings, the benches that are there, you know, are kind of wood, painted wood, again, looking a little dated. What I like about them is they're very simple and clean, okay? That's a good thing. I would imagine you have to paint them quite often, I don't know. But what we're recommending to possibly replace those benches was some powder-coated steel benches that will last a very long time and hold up long-term. So again, that's one of those items, it's a great amenity, it's a nice addition, but if you don't want to spend money, then you leave the benches as is. Pedestrian bridge, now, as part of the budget in the landscape improvements and everything for the wastewater treatment plant, as it stands now, include a pedestrian bridge made out of lumber, okay? That we, I don't know if it's going to look exactly like that, but it'll be similar to that type of a construction, pretty basic bridge. So that's already going to go in as part of the improvement. What we were looking at is potentially upgrading that, since it sounds like there is a lot of traffic that goes across that area. Pedestrian bridges made out of steel will last forever. They are somewhat costly. We put 30,000 on it. I actually think that's a high number. It's probably more like 20 to 25, but we're trying to be conservative at this point. I think, I'm sorry? Where's it going? That would go...
It's going basically just, yeah, just that little.
Yeah, there's about a 20-foot span.
There's a combination of the building and the swales down for some compost storage. Yeah, and then, so it's basically just over two swales.
It's probably, I don't know, four feet deep or something like that in there, but that swale goes all the way around, of course, if you've been out there, so. So that's potential upgrade to that pedestrian bridge. The, all the planting boxes, or not boxes, the circles around the armed services plaza would all be, that landscaping would be torn out, new put in, and new irrigation, well, not new, but putting in irrigation in all those areas, as well as in front of all the sign and everything that I pointed out on the plan. So we're going to use a lot of plants that have color from spring all the way to fall. And part of this, you'll see when I get into the cost, you'll see, you know, the base and alternative A and B. The reason why they increased is we're just putting a lot more landscape in, a lot more color, things like that, and a lot more area on the different options. So here's just some of the trees and shrubs that we're looking at, if you decide to put in a fair amount of landscaping. And we talked about some of these at Streetscape, and everybody was, you know, generally in consensus. There were some additions that they recommended at committee. So this is last slide, and I'll spend a little bit of time here, and I imagine you'll have maybe the most questions here, too. So the base, down here is the base, and it's showing 195,000. Again, we're getting the credit, what we'll call the credit of 44,000 that was already going in, to put the improvements at about 151,000, okay? So with that, we're getting the medallions that would be, you know, we're kind of recommending the vinyl, like Addison Fire Protection District did, vinyl and painted vinyl on aluminum. And then electrical and lighting would be very simple. We'd probably do the ground-mounted lighting if we did the back wall, okay? Irrigation's about 36,000. I don't know if anybody that's ever dealt with irrigation, that is an expensive item, but it's something that, if you're going to put this in, I just, we just highly recommend it, doing it. In this option, we're not doing the benches, we're not doing the upgraded pedestrian bridge, or the entrance columns. By the way, that, what that is, is as you come into the park, we were thinking about putting some sort of little arch, a little gateway into the park for the pedestrians to walk through. Again, really nice upgrade, certainly has a cost to it, but that's what that line item is.
Can we interject that question? Alderman Roy Wesley.
I want to go back to saying you said a lot of landscaping. Landscapers have a tendency of putting a lot of plants in which aren't, I'm not saying they're not needed, but I'm saying they put them too close together. I'm a landscaper myself, but landscape architects have a tendency of putting one on top of another, so no room for growth. How are you planning this out? I mean, are you leaving double space for your, in your design for growth?
I don't think we're leaving double space, but we're designing to what we typically do. Now, your statement is fair, I think, that a lot of landscape architects do.
Fair. It's true. It's not fair. It's true.
Very true, that, you know, they're packed too tightly. Part of the reason why some do that, and I don't know, maybe we've done that too sometimes, is that if you don't get them somewhat compact for five to 10 years, it just, it looks kind of sparse. So sometimes you have to pack them a little closer. But long-term, after 15 years or 10 years, you start to see stuff get a little overgrown.
10 years, I'm ripping it out, because you got three plants, and now you got two plants that grew too close together.
I don't think we're doing it super compact, but I think to your point, we could relook at that and make sure we're, you know, spacing everything appropriately. We usually do, but...
I'd rather leave a little more space for growth, instead of having come back in five years and ripping plants out.
Okay. Any other questions before I go through the rest of these numbers? Okay. So, yeah, I'm not going to go through each one of these line items, but the landscaping is for all the different areas, but what we feel is most appropriate for the base plan. So that's that column. Alternative A, I won't go through each one of these line items, but as you see what I pointed out in yellow, are the things that are more costly that really make it get up to a larger amount. So electrical and lighting, where this one was only uplighting the medallions, in this alternative, now you're getting to replacing all the ballards and running the lines, which, you know, again, costs some money. So primarily the ballards and maybe uplighting some of the plants and things like that. So that's what that line item is. The benches now come in, the site furnishings on this alternative? Go ahead.
You have entry and monument sign. Do we have a picture of, because I know we're working on signs for the city already. Would they be consistent with that, or do you have a picture of what you're thinking of there?
Oh, did you want to? Go ahead.
No, that's the freedom sign. That's what we're considering, entry and monument sign. That's, it's not a new sign for the park.
Correct.
The existing freedom sign.
So does that have to be upgraded?
The plating's around there, the sign doesn't need to be upgraded. This is just the landscaping around that sign.
Correct.
Needs to be gutted and redone.
Okay.
Right.
Mayor, please.
As far as the lighting, you showed the same type of lighting we had on the bridge. How many lights are you proposing throughout the entire park? I mean, I see 48,000, 13,000, 48,000. How many more lights are we putting up? I mean...
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm going to have that number for you right offhand.
Because I was looking, I couldn't find it right.
Yeah. And we have, first of all, all around the plaza, you know, we had, I don't know how many, but...
I think there was 12.
Is there 12 there now, is what you're saying?
I think there was a total of 12.
Okay. But we are also adding them in a few other locations as well.
Right, he was talking about adding. That's why the 48,000, replacing and adding and making it all uniform.
Correct, throughout the park. Okay.
Alderman Catalano.
So these are just estimated costs? I mean, these are not costs?
Correct.
So we don't know how much it's going to cost us?
Not exactly. This is at what we consider conceptual stage yet, so we, based on our experience, we do call vendors and get prices and things, but it's not an exact cost at this point, because we'd have to go and do more research and get a little more detailed, which is what we're going to do in the next, you know, next step.
Right, thank you.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Alderman Woods, I believe at the last meeting, when we talked about if we were going to put the medallions on the back wall, we had considered on the circular wall, perhaps large cutouts of servicemen in action. That would certainly bring people to know immediately that it's a memorial park. Did anybody ever get any designs or prices?
That was mentioned, yeah, I mentioned to put silhouettes or things like that and uplight them, yeah. We just noted it down. I mean, we didn't like add it into the cost or do any more research on it. But, yeah, you're correct. That was a, I thought a good idea.
Awesome eye catcher, regardless of which way you're driving.
I think the end result of that was to say that, you know, it's a great idea, and maybe it's done later, you know, outside of this project, I think was the end result of that. At least that's how we kind of interpreted that comment. I mean, we think it's a great idea, especially if the medallions are put in the back wall, but we have not priced them out or, you know, went any further on that.
Don't let them go too far on their bake burner.
Okay.
It's an awesome idea.
Okay, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. Going to the third column, you can see, you know, the medallions go to the six-foot medallions around the other wall, the lighting that goes over the top, that's why the large cost. Again, I think we're actually very high on that. We can bring it down through some different methods and materials, but we just don't, we want to be conservative at this point. Electrical lighting, the same. Irrigation starts to increase because we're doing more landscaping in larger areas. Now you're adding in the bridge for about 30,000, and the entrance columns, the arch over the pedestrian entrance way, okay? And then the last thing is just, you know, more landscaping, more areas and things like that. So that's alternative B, okay? So I think with that, I'll stop there. You guys have already asked some great questions, but if you have more questions for me, or anything else, I'm here to answer them.
Do we have any more questions? Mayor, please.
Are we going to at least pick the medallions that we're looking at? I mean, I think the two better ones where you were talking about was that aluminum, vinyl, and the bronze.
Correct.
Which were not the cheapest, but probably the best-looking, in my opinion.
And probably going to last longer.
Alderman Jacob.
Question again, and I know Alderman Woods is on that committee, the Streetscape Committee. Have we talked about maybe, I mean, if we're going to not put the medallions on the curved wall, maybe putting some kind of nice sign there in front of it so that people could see that they know it's there? Have we talked about that at all? We did, we did talk about that. We talked about a lot of things. I mean, this is a fairly healthy project, and there were a lot of good ideas. The silhouettes that Alderman Sorrentino brought up, that was, everybody liked that concept. The thing is, there's so many things going into this little area, and nobody can really visualize what this is going to look like, even know what it looks like when it's completed with the buildings and the fence and the parking lot and everything done. So right now, we're kind of putting it together. The trees need to be cut down. We need to improve the sightline. Nobody's really got a good idea what that sightline is. On paper, we can draw it, and I know from designing houses, drawing it on paper and seeing it physically is a little bit different. So we tried to pare the project down and just get a few things done, you know, but tell us what it would cost if we wanted to do some of these others, just so we have some guidance in the future. And the more we got into it, the more we had more ideas, and all of them were good. But trying to incorporate them and then understand how those actually look and feel in that space when we don't have the space carved out yet was becoming a very hard task.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Alderman Jacobs, what, you're saying that people don't know where Veterans Park is, and you seem like you're heading towards another sign. Is that what you're looking for? I'm kind of confused what you're going for here, because there's an internal flame there. There's a sign that says freedom. I don't know how much more could you put at where Veterans Park is.
Well, kind of like I said before, there's a lot of people that have no clue, and these are people that drive by it. And right now, there is a lot of trees and things there, so...
If they drive by, that's fine. If they live in town, that's a different story.
Well, no, these are people...
Well, no, these are people that live in town that have no clue we even have it there. And they drive by it every day and they just, all I'm saying is to make it, do something to make it a little bit more visible to the public.
Well, and let me just, so that's one of the things we wanted to do. I mean, some of these things came up that you can't see it when you're coming from the west going east. But we didn't add anything from what was there before. So the existing conditions were there. It's just we've now brought this area to light and people are now scrutinizing it where they didn't before and realizing, you know, there are certain issues with that site that need to be cleaned up. So that's one of the, that was one of the hardest things, trying to recommend some of these things to go in there when we really didn't fully visually understand the, the site to begin with. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Well, I think we should do something over there. I personally didn't think the price tag was going to be this high on any of these. I mean, I, I believe when we went to groundbreaking, when we started treatment plant, I said, wow, this was, I mean, the mayor had that conversation. This would be nice, get this wall, do something like this. This is a, a big price tag here. I, I'll tell you one thing, I'm up for the four hundred and ten. I'm up for the two fifty-two.
You're not?
I mean, I really think we need to look at maybe, like Mr. Wood says, let's gradually work this Veterans Park in play here. Because truthfully, we aren't going to know what it looks like. To go ahead and throw everything out there all at once, take the biggest project out there, it may not look good a little bit here again and say, oh, maybe we should have done that, maybe we should have did that. So I'm in, propose to do something, but I'm not ready to throw all the money up there until we see something. I mean, we gotta do this gradually because I, I just, I mean, we just spent two point five billion dollars for intersection study, so. So let's look at something else here or something.
Alderman Sorrentino.
I tend to agree with Alderman Wesley. We could do this in stages and perhaps one of the first stages we should consider would be the medallions on the wall to pay our respect for the five branches. And with that in mind, I'm just concerned, and maybe you've seen it right here, but with the aluminum and the vinyl, with any sort of lighting, if it would put off more of a glare than the visibility of the, the actual medallion?
Uh, the vinyl is actually not visible, like the, or I'm sorry, not the vinyl, the aluminum is not actually visible. It, the vinyl covers it all, so you actually won't see any aluminum.
All right, well, the vinyl has a shine to it.
It'll be more than a bronze or the other materials, correct? But, but I don't, I don't think it'll be, uh, to the point where it's like glaring though. I mean, it's gonna be, yeah, I mean, you can look at the Addison ones too, and I, I was really impressed with those. And obviously a close by example, if you want to look at them, but Matt, Art, when you looked at them out there, did you?
Yeah, I, I, and that's why I brought them to your attention. I was pretty impressed. I went, so I stopped in and talked to the chief over there and he got us the information to do this. Driving by, you never would have thought that that's what they were. I mean, they really do look nice. They look more expensive than what they are.
What they are, yeah, I agree.
I guess some arguments are, well, it's vinyl and aluminum and it could fall apart. Well, but if it's one-fifth the cost and it lasts 10 years, you know, I don't know. They, in talking to the, the manufacturer, the same with, uh, we, we went down to Indiana to the sign company that's going to start building the signs for Wooddale. I also brought it up to them. They said they could do the sign with a similar product and even a better product than the vinyl. But a similar concept of an overlay over a, an aluminum, heavy aluminum disc type of thing. So there's options out there when you get into them. The nice thing about the Addison one is they're more visual. You're driving by, you, you automatically notice it. And I do think that if there was a light on them in the back, that you would notice them. They're, they're not that much farther behind other than you're, you're coming into that cove, that wall first, which is a little distraction, but. So Alderman Eugene Wesley, or Roy Wesley, take it back. Sorry, sorry, buddy.
Okay. I agree on, we could break this down of, I mean, we definitely have to do something with the landscaping because when you're coming from the, when you're coming from the west going east, you can't see the park because of the bushes. And I agree on the medallions, do the medallions first, but could we do that section first where, where you can't see nothing of the park from, going from west to east?
Mr. York.
Yeah, and I, I think that's something that we could probably even do with some of our in-house resources on, um, trying to open up the park a little bit, take some of the brush and the shrubs and cut them up and clean them out, take the bad ones out. I mean, we even talked about maybe even doing some of that ourselves. And then kind of seeing, you know, this is what we think we need to do, take them out and then step back again from it and say, do we need to take more? Do we, you know, do we need to replant some stuff, maybe a little bit smaller, more, you know, being able to maintain it a little bit better than the overgrowth that's already there? We also have some things like the, um, the power comes in there, the gas line comes in there, that we have to do some, some fancy shielding.
Yeah.
And, you know, so it doesn't look like there's a gas meter hanging out right in front of a, kind of right.
There's a big one, right?
Right in the middle of that bush line, there's all of our electric and stuff is kind of all sitting there. So, you know, if we want to do some sort of signage, if we want to do something else, maybe we could use something like that to block it, some different kinds of bushes, those kind of things. But I think the initial, kind of the first whack at it, let's say, we could maybe do in-house, you know, and kind of, and kind of see where we're at and then, and then take that next step forward.
And the ones that we're talking about in here, or right in here, the ones that we'd possibly take out or at least you could start taking out, you know, a few of them or whatever, would be in that location. But a lot of the trees through here, uh, we're thinking there's no reason to take them out. I mean, they're, they're in decent shape and quality and things like that. They're not, they're not screwing your view.
Okay, let, let me just comment on that and then I'll call, uh, you know. I've been, you know, talking with H R Green. We've gone through Streetscape Committee, sat down with, uh, Mr. York and we've talked about this seriously. Some of the questions that we're talking about seem to be reoccurring themes that we, we don't fully understand the site and then we want to do a staged approach to this. So in my last conversations with Mr. York, that's exactly what we talked about. Hey, why don't we just move forward with what was included in the original contract so that there's no additional cost? We'll cut up some of those canopies on the trees, pull out some bushes, determine what the sightlines are and what the best placement, are they on that back wall, the other wall, the medallions? There's some difference of opinion of where they should go. And I'd like us to really understand the site and, and not make a mistake because it is an important site. If, if nothing else was expressed to me by residents that do know where it's at and are involved was to proceed cautiously and not to ruin something that was a very nice monument set, you know, out there. So with that, I, I'm going to make a, a motion to stay with the, option D, which is stay with the original plan that was included in the treatment plant. It's not on the paper, but we'll just stay with that and then we'll get Public Works out there to cut up the trees and create the sightlines. And then we, we do have some good groundwork that was done by H R Green with reviewing all the medallions and different things so we can address those issues as they come.
I'd second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second question. The mayor, please.
What about the medallions? I mean, I know we can go right to the landscaping, but are we going to pick a medallion and just get those?
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would like to, to wait a couple more weeks, the medallions. I mean, so if, if we let them start shaping that space and get the bridge built, I don't think, I mean, we could ask the, the sign people that did Addisons, how long it takes to get those? If it's a four-week thing? I mean, that, that space isn't going to be done for a little bit. I mean, we could be doing two things at one time.
The bridge is part of the forty-four thousand, is that what you're telling me?
Correct, right.
Cause it was thirty thousand on your thing, so.
The upgraded ridge, what's going as part of.
To add thirty thousand.
Yeah, to add.
How long is that bridge?
Twenty feet, well, it's spanning twenty feet, the actual bridge is a little longer, but it's spanning twenty feet.
Mayor, please.
Wait, the bridge was included, now the thirty thousand is an additional to the forty thou, to make a better bridge.
Correct.
Correct.
Which you need to, if people are going to walk through the swales, they're going to go up and down the possible trip hazards, what you're telling me?
No, I mean, that, go back to, go back one. That, that's going to be the bridge.
That's the bridge that's included. So we do have a bridge.
Yeah, but if we want the nice bridge, the super bridge, then we get one of those. We get one of those.
Oh, and that's the extra thirty thousand.
Yeah, that's the extra thirty thousand. Those are like, you know, on paths and, you know, bike trails and stuff like that will have bridges like this. This is going to be small, small market walking.
Yeah.
Gives us, just that one. Which, I mean.
And it's just wood, we're going to paint it or stain it or whatever.
We could stain it, seal coat, treat it and seal it.
Whatever you want.
Whatever, it's treated wood.
Cause I had a question, you guys, on the, like, the alternate, the second one said, uh.
Over the cost.
Where you had all the costs, right. The bottom line, landscaping wastewater treatment plant, other sixty-six thousand. I'm thinking, our budget was forty-four thousand, was that twenty-six thou, twenty-two thousand over budget or?
Uh, no, here, here's the deal, back when that was originally priced out, which was, boy, now it's been a couple of years at least, uh, maybe three years ago, actually, I think. What, you know, remember the economy was in a different situation there and we've seen literally a huge increase in.
Fifty percent?
Well, you'd be surprised. I mean, we are really seeing, a lot of landscape companies are, are really swamped, they're bidding high. I mean, we've been caught on the last, like, four projects. And I will say, and I, I think I said on some of these, I feel like we're kind of at the high end of pricing because that's what's been coming in. It's unfortunate, but that's what's happening.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So I understand the strategy you take, what was original design plan for the treatment plant, give it back to the contractor to do. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we never took it from them, so we'll.
No, we. Wait, wait a minute. Matt, did we not withdraw out of the contract?
No, it hasn't been withdrawn out of the contract yet. They were put on a holding pattern, told them, we told them not to do anything with landscaping until we got through with this, this round of meetings. So it's still in the contract.
Okay, but let's back up here. So that will then push, I'm in favor of doing what we decide. I'm just saying, there was a timeline for them to finish that treatment plant. So are we coming back then now that we threw this, maybe throwing this back in? Now they're going to come back and say, now we got to line up their landscaper and then it's going to delay the finishing of it? I'm in favor of doing what we decide up here. That's the only contract that I'm concerned with now.
Mr. York.
I do not know if they're going to ask for an additional extension. That is part of final completion and not substantial completion, so they've got some time to do that. I, I don't know what the, what the whole solution. I mean, we did put them on hold, so if that does happen, maybe substantial completion stays at the date. We give them an extension on final completion for this part.
I agree with you there, that's fine. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, okay, let me just interject though. I don't, I don't, whatever we did, that portion would be extended anyway. Whether we give it back to H R Green to do it under the original contract terms or we give them a more robust contract to do the work and move forward, it, it's going to extend. Mayor, please.
Okay, so the motion was to go back to the original.
Correct.
Correct.
So, but everything that was in that original, I thought there were some changes being made in some of the discussions. So I, I don't want to be putting stuff in and then we're going to take stuff out because it, are we?
Valid point, that's a very valid point.
We're going to spend, we might take out ten thousand dollars worth of landscaping that we didn't want.
I will say that based on what, I mean, we did the original plan.
Right.
So when we went through and looked at this, I'm going to guess that, uh, let's see, I'm going to say at least half of it is no change, okay?
Okay, so the other half.
The other half is what we're changing.
So we could be spending twenty-two thousand for nothing.
Well, not necessarily.
Not, not for.
Not necessarily because what they would plant in, we would just build upon what they planted in. Cause there is some plantings around the building twenty, which is that first building, and there's also some plantings around, um, the, uh, the parking lot. Those would be going in as originally planned, as well as some trees over on the, uh, those big trees over on that side. All of that would be going in still, and I think what we would do is just use those as kind of the jumping off point for the rest of it.
Right, the only thing I'm saying is, as long as we're, whatever we're putting in is going to stay and then all of a sudden it's going to change and we're pulling it out again.
No.
I don't think it's as bad as, and maybe I shouldn't have said fifty percent. I would say maybe.
You shouldn't have said fifty percent.
Yeah, you kind of made me nervous.
It's more like.
Ninety percent, no, ninety-nine point five.
Let, let, let me just jump in one second though. So, and I, and I agree, it's probably eighty to eighty-five percent would, would remain the same. So if, if we go with option D and then give it back, put it back in the contract, let them do it, we still have a little time to say, hey, take those couple of things out and they'll reduce the, the job by two thousand or three thousand dollars.
That's all I'm saying.
Some of the other things, like bushes or something that we replant and we might determine after we raise the canopies on the trees and pull some other stuff out, hey, that doesn't look good there. I'm sure we could dig that thing up and move it to another location. So I don't, I don't visualize it's going to be a, a super big loss. So that, I mean, otherwise I wouldn't have thrown this out here, I would have offered alternatives, but. Alderman Jacob.
Now, remember, not remembering exactly what the original plan was, did that include any lighting or anything? Or is that just bushes and things of that nature? And the bridge?
Yeah, it was, it was pretty much plantings.
Very basic.
And the bridge, the bridge is included.
Mayor, please.
You just mentioned lighting. So we're going to landscape the whole thing and then we're going to have to go in and trench or whatever to put in the new lighting. Is, maybe, shouldn't we put in the lighting ahead of time? Before we put in the final sod and whatnot?
The, well.
Well, there's really not a lot of sod in the areas that we're, we're, we're talking about and where the, most of the lighting would.
There would be a little bit probably that we would have to rip up and put down again, but, I mean, it's very minimal. I would think it's probably less than a hundred square feet of, of, of area.
Yeah, it'd be pretty minimal.
It's trenching like your cable TV.
Right, and it, I mean, it's done all the time. I do it on new houses, you go in and.
Well, if we're there, I mean, we can do the lighting. If we, if we know where the lighting is going to be, then we can.
But that, that's part of the, and, and I agree, I wish we could do it all, but, I mean, I, I don't have a good feeling of it coming out and making everybody happy. That's, that's my concern.
Right, no, no, I want to do it right.
So I don't want to be the guy getting yelled at.
Right, no, no, I understand.
I'll be pretty lonely out in front too.
This is a very sensitive area.
Right behind you.
You got a motion, second.
So, uh, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
That carries. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I just want to say thanks to the H R Green for coming up with those proposals for us. I mean, that, that gave us some idea which.
People make a decision, absolutely.
Right, so thanks for all that hard work you did on that.
I mean, we'll full, fully use all the homework that.
Right.
And design and stuff that they use, it's just hard to throw that package together.
Mr. York.
Yeah, so point of clarification, I just want to make sure that I got this. I'm going to notify H R Green at the treatment plant tomorrow that they are to move forward with current landscaping plans as in the contract.
Yes. Correct.
Correct.
Mr. Murmice.
And also no medallion purchases right now.
At present, no.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much and thanks for letting me go first, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Next, uh, report and recommendation approval, partial payment request number eighteen to William Brothers Construction Inc. for the North Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrades Phase One B in amount not to exceed six hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. That is my motion. Second. Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Stop though.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
That passes. Next, approval of partial payment request number nineteen to William Brothers Construction Inc. for the, uh, North Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrades Phase One B Project in amount not to exceed four hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents.
North Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrades Phase One B Project in amount not to exceed four hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents, that is my motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
That passes. Next, approval of partial payment request number one to Schroder Asphalt for the Woodside Subdivision Road Project in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and nine cents, that is my motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
That passes. Next, approval of purchase of a two thousand sixteen Ford Fusion SE in an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand, that is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Alderman Jacob.
And looking at the repairs on this, there was like twenty-one thousand dollars worth of repairs, was there like one major repair that made a big portion of that, or?
Mr. York.
Um, I do not have the repair listing, uh, repair by repair, out here, um, this vehicle that's being replaced, um, is currently utilized by Nick, um, and, to be all honest, the thing is falling around upon itself, and it's, uh, needs to be replaced. And, uh, Community Development needed this additional vehicle for their fleet, so that's why, uh, that vehicle is being traded in, or removed from service.
Alderman Jacob.
Uh, one other question is, you had said, uh, our IT director has, had been using that vehicle, now it's going to Community Development, so what is our IT director gonna use going forward, if we get rid of one?
We have, we have addi- we have additional pool cars that are available to administration for him to use, if he needs it.
Any more questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Uh, I have one question, you just made a statement, maybe I didn't hear it right, that this vehicle's falling apart. And now we're gonna hand this vehicle down to another division?
No, this vehicle will be removed from service.
Out of, out of fleet?
Yes, the, the vehicle, um, Mr. Cage's vehicle will be handed down to another member of his team, and he will, he will tend, take over this new vehicle.
Alder Messina.
Okay. This was before my time, but, can you let us know, wh- why would the IT director need a vehicle?
Mr. Murmice.
He doesn't need a vehi- it's not a take-home vehicle or anything, you don't want the IT director who goes to two different locations, Public Works Building One, Treatment Plant is being built in Two. You don't want him taking his personal vehicle over there during the day doing city work on the IT infrastructure that, at the different locations. So the, the vehicle stays in the parking lot, it's just for use throughout the day, same as an inspector will go out and do an inspection in a city car.
Mr. Messina.
Have we looked at the option of expensing mileage and allowing him to use his own vehicle? Or is that an insurance thing?
Mr. Murmice.
From time to time, if there's not a vehicle available, we'll do it for like a conference or something, you can expense mileage, but, I mean, this vehicle is a, is a need. Basically, the driving need for this vehicle is the addition of a new inspector, we didn't have a vehicle for the new inspector, which we improved in the budget.
Gotcha, thanks.
No more questions, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
That passes. Next is purchase of two F-350 pickup trucks from Curry Motors in an amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions?
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Why are we buying F-350s, four-by-twos and not four-by-fours?
Mr. York.
They are four-by-fours, um, the later option, there's an option to purchase a four-by-four.
What?
We are purchasing four-by-fours.
It says four-by-two. Am I reading it wrong?
That's what I'm just checking, I think. Um...
It says FL, uh, uh, F-350 XL, four-by-two.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, I checked on the wrong one. Yeah. There's option. The first one's a four-by-two, that's correct, because we do not use that for snow plowing. The crew cab is a four-by-two, cause we do not use that for snow plowing, and the second one, the second one is a four-by-four, cause we're gonna utilize that for snow plowing.
That doesn't...
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Why would you buy a 350 and a four-by-two?
Mr. York.
Well, the three...
And not a 250?
Well, the 350 is used for hauling of the, it's gonna be used for the mowing crew to haul the trailers, so we bought the four. If you'd like us to look at the four-by-two, we'd be more than happy to see if that meets our requirements for hauling the trailer.
Four-by-four?
Um, if I go with a four-by-four and plow four, I'm gonna get a four, I'm gonna get an F-350. That's gonna be, make it over our budgeted amount, line items.
Is there a F-350?
Yes. So currently, this is an F-350 four-by-two crew cab with the long bed, so we do not want it, we didn't wanna use that as part of our snowing fleet, cause it makes it a larg- a larger vehicle. So that's why we went with the F-250. Now, if we'd go with the F, or, excuse me, the F-350 four-by-two, if I'd go with an F-350 four-by-four with a plowing option, the longer cab, the bigger cab, which we need for mowing, makes the truck a little bit harder to drive for snow plowing.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
When you're saying crew cab, you're saying four doors, right?
Yes.
Is that cause you're running three-man, four-man crew?
Yes.
For landscaping or lawn cutting?
So you can't...
And in a plowing situation, you only have one guy, a driver, and you don't...
Yes, sir.
So you can't go to a regular, not a regular cab, but an extended cab? I mean, you, you're adding extra length on the truck, I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
And for plowing a four-by-two with a, with a crew cab, yeah, you're putting a lot more wear, a lot more weakness on the truck, I understand that. But if you go to the shorter cab, not the bed, the cab,
Mm-hmm.
you would be able to use that for, for snow plowing, because you're gonna come back to us next year and say, well, you know what? I need another plow truck, a four-by-four. Or the year after. So here you're spending twenty thousand dollars, spend it, I, if you're gonna do that, you're gonna spend it, go, go to, uh, probably thirty-five thousand, it would probably go to, right?
Um, let's see, it's a...
And then you have an extra, then you have another truck for plowing.
Yeah, I'd have to look to see how much the actual cost would be for that, um...
I mean, it's stu- it's ridiculous that we're, that we're spending that kinda money and not using the truck to the full extent, extent that we can. Because we, our turnover on these trucks are what, five to six years roughly, maybe a little longer?
Yeah, these trucks are, um, on a schedule for ten years, um, possibly a little bit longer than that, but they're scheduled for ten.
But in return, you sit there and, I've heard before that, oh, we got too much grass to cut, we got this to do, we got this to do. And then, there's been some talk before about subbing the grass out, and it's, okay, now we got this truck, and we got, and then we're gonna be back to the same thing again, so, I'd rather look at the four-by-fours than the four-by-twos and not the, not the crew cab, but the extended cab.
Okay.
So, let me just ask, are we, we're replacing trucks, we're, we're not eliminating any snowplow that we have now, right?
No, we're actually adding one snowplow to the fleet. We're act- the, this, the first truck that we're talking about, this four-by-two, is replacing a truck that has no snowplow capabilities right now. The second vehicle of these F-350s is replacing a Crown Victoria, which obviously has no snowplowing capabilities, but we are replacing that one.
Not good ones, anyway.
Yeah, it's hard, it, it doesn't get around corners very good with the plow on it, so, um, so we are replacing that one. So we're actually gonna be a plus-one, um, from our current fleet of snowplow trucks by utilizing this situation. Just doing some quick math, it'll probably be an extra six, seven thousand dollars to go with an F-350 four-by-four with the plow options and everything.
So, I'm just, let me, one more quick, cause I'm trying to understand Alderman Roy Wesley's, uh, concern, and if it makes sense to me. I mean, it sounds like it makes sense, but, uh...
Wow.
Well, I'm just saying, I, 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 I get what you're trying to do, is add that extra utility to the vehicle, but if we decrease one end of the utility to increase the other end, you know, then it's not functional, hundred percent functional for either one, so that's my, my biggest concern. He wants a crew cab to put a four-man crew in it.
A three-bet.
We don't, we don't essentially need a...
Three or four.
Another plow, cause we're already adding another plow. Turning that into a plow truck's also gonna reduce the life of that truck as a landscape truck, too, I mean, so there's a lot of moving parts, that's all. Uh, Alderman, uh, Peter Jacob.
Um, a couple of quick questions here, um, and I'm not sure if, uh, Mr. York could answer this, maybe Mr. Murmice has to answer this, but why would we have taken a Crown Victoria and given it to Public Works, I mean, I don't, I mean, how long has Public Works been using a Crown Victoria? Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Wesley. Um, the Crown Victoria is currently used by our crew leader to go out and look, look at jobs. Um, that he doesn't really need to perform any functions, he needs to go out and check a streetlight, he needs to go out, um, check on a project area that was done ahead of time, um, he needs, they need, we need to send guys to conference or training or workshops or something, they use the Crown Victoria. When I got here, I had the same kinda quandary that you're in right now, is why do we have a Crown Victoria in Public Works? Um, it doesn't meet any usable function, so, our thought was to put a new, uh, pickup truck into the fleet, which we really could use, especially in the summertime, because using, you know, one-ton dump trucks to go out and, you know, pick up weeds and stuff like that, is really not utilizing a vehicle to its functionality. So, to be able to put this into the fleet, um, to whether the crew leader uses it, or it's just a regular pickup truck, it gives us other opportunities to go out. And if they go out to check just a job, and they see a branch on the side of the road, they can throw it in the back of a truck, where they can't really put it in the back of a Crown Vic all that easily.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I actually got come in mad on, on this one, because he's staying within his means of his budget that we put together. I mean, granted, we get another, say we put another plow on, are we gonna have guys to plow? We, we, right now, we got enough plow trucks for each guy that's a plowing, that could plow, and we have, if I am mistaken, we have one backup. Okay, so, I mean...
Plus the new one that you wanna buy.
Right, so, I mean, if we don't have men to put in that truck to plow, why invest another six thousand dollars or whatever ballpark figure in going in that direction, if we don't have the guy used to plow it? Then I'm not for going to plow trucks.
Alderman Jacob.
I, I guess my next question to Mr. York is, now that all of our police cars are SUVs and they are all-wheel drives, I'm not sure when one of those is up for, uh, disposal, or could we hand that down to the crew leader? He would have an SUV, um, instead of a Crown Victoria, an all-wheel-drive SUV, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and, and again, I don't know when the next police vehicle would be up anyhow, but...
Mr. York.
Yeah, the functionality of an SUV for a Public Works person that is actually performing jobs in the field doesn't meet that, doesn't meet the need. What meets the need is, is a pickup truck, and the F-350, I mean, this is what we, we came with, I mean, this is, this is what we think we need to do the job. I mean, if we wanna do something different, I'm okay with that, um, but, I guess I wouldn't have brought the F-350 to you if that's not what I felt that we needed to fully function in our department.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Why don't you order an F-250 then?
Mr. York.
Well, I, I'd like the, the, the strength and power of the F-350, um, to allow us to do our job properly.
Here we go, strength and power, again, we're back to the four-by-four then. Plus, you know, you look at these winters, they're not getting easier. If you blow, if you blow a trans in the night, okay, now you lost the truck, you got a driver, but no truck, only you and I have one or two. You know, these winters are not getting easier.
Mm-hmm.
And for seven, oh, six thousand, seven thousand dollars, you're gonna get the value out of the truck, you're gonna get the resale value, a lot more than a, a four-by-two.
But he doesn't get the cab that he wants, I think the issue is, he doesn't get the...
He can.
But even you agree that the, the dual cab or king cab weakens the vehicle, cause of the pounding, once you lengthen that vehicle like that.
It does, that's what, if you ju- I, how many times do you have four guys cutting grass? I've only seen it three times, I, three guys, I've never seen four.
Well, we, we do use a four-man crew, especially early on in the season when we're, um, when we're running only a four-man crew instead of two, two crews, but like before, we get all of our summer help in, we run a four-man crew a lot of times in the early in the season and late in the season. Cause we take two mowers out and two weed whackers, we get it all done, and we button it up and move to the next thing. So, we do use a four-man crew. I, I understand what you're saying, I do really think the four-man crew and the crew cab is something that we need in the department. And with that, I can't utilize the plow in it, it's just, they, you can plow with a crew cab, but everybody that I've ever known that's plowed with a crew cab, and I've actually plowed with a crew cab before, too, and it's hard, it's a lot harder than a regular cab truck.
It's terrible. It's terrible.
So, I mean, if we wanna go with the F-350, I can, I can, you know, utilize the F-350, um, as long, I mean, I'd like to run it past my mechanics first, to make sure that they, they agree with that as well, um, but, and that would save us a little bit of money to go with the F-35, or the F-250. But I guess what I'd ask you today is, if, if everybody is agreeable to, um, the purchase of these vehicles at that not-to-exceed amount, I go back and try to figure out if an F-350 and F-250 is, is what we actually need, if we can deal with the F-250, then obviously that's gonna save us money, we're gonna come in under, under value, so...
Mayor, please.
Going to the F-250, you guys just talked about it, the F-350's got more power, you, these are work trucks, these aren't recreational vehicles. So if you're gonna go to the 250, just gonna beat it quicker, gonna have to replace it, the scoring's not gonna be as good, from what I'm listening. I don't, I don't think we go down from F-350 to 250, but... It's nice that you're putting an extra plowing vehicle in, and, and I understand what your concern is about the men, and putting four guys in an extended cab versus a crew cab is, it's a big difference, and I don't, I don't have a problem with it, I, I do like the, I, I would like the idea of having that extra plow as well, but...
But we are getting an extra plow.
Right, no, no, but I mean, the second one, but, like...
Oh, yeah.
Like Eugene said, if you don't have enough guys at that time, I mean...
Alderman Messina.
So, kinda off of Nunes's point with the scoring, where do we stand with some of the other plows that we have in service? Are there any that are up anytime soon?
Um, not at this level of, uh, the 350 level, um... You know, for this year's budget, we had these two vehicles, we have the next vehicle that we'll get to with the next item, um, and then I have two dump trucks, the large dump trucks that are up for, that are up for, um, replacement. But at this level, we only have, like, I only really have two pickup trucks in a department, uh, in this, on the street side. By utilizing these, I, I only really have one extra pickup truck that's not going out with the mowing crews on a daily basis. So, having this additional pickup truck, um, and the, and the replacement, obviously, 202 is falling apart. I mean, it's thirteen years old, I mean, it, it's done, it's, it's done its time, it needs to go away. So it's just, it's just something that really we need in the, in the streets division mainly.
Alderman Messina.
Gas efficiency too. If we went to a plow, it wouldn't be as efficient, I'm guessing, with gas.
I mean, gas, gas efficiency in public, I mean, if I can get nine.
It's an oxymoron.
Miles a gallon on these things. I mean, I can get to the number sometimes, but.
It's minimal.
It's, it, we don't want to go there right now.
Alderman Smarsky.
Matt, you're staying within your budget with this, right?
Yes, sir.
I don't see why the council's sitting up here debating something that you, as the director of Public Works, you're saying, you're stating what you need to do your job and what the city needs to do its job. I don't, I don't understand why we're bouncing back and forth, spending all this time on. If, as long as you're staying under your budget and you're getting the vehicles you think you need to do the job in the city, I don't have any reason why you shouldn't have that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Roll call. That's what I said, we had. Right.
Okay, Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Smarsky.
Yes.
Yes. That carries. Next, purchase of F-550 in an amount not to exceed $73,467. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions?
Alderman Smarsky.
Before they go anywhere, is this a four wheel drive also, or is it going to have a plow?
Yes, sir.
Just so we don't have this again.
Yes, sir, four wheel drive with plow and wet system.
Any further questions? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Smarsky.
Yes.
That passes. Next items to be considered at future meetings, RFP Ward 3 Stormwater Design, July 23rd, Elizabeth Court Poms, July 23rd, Hemlock Sidewalk Contract Award, July 23rd, and Tollway IGA, July 23rd. It's going to be a busy July 23rd. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I'd like to bring up the Edgewood sidewalk again since the surveys came back.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't have to be the 23rd, but I'd like to bring it back up.
Anything else? Make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Return.
I'd like to call the order of the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee. Please take note of the same council members present. Want to make a motion to approve the planning, zoning, building, regular meeting minutes for June 11th. That is my motion.
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Next, reporting recommendation for citywide dumpster enclosure in 7th program. Mr. Cage, you want to?
Yes, thank you, Alderman Catalano. This is a proposal. What, what I've seen since I've been with the city, I know the city council feels very strongly about code enforcement issues. This is one issue that I have noted personally. And certainly don't want to, you know, name businesses or locations, but obviously with a new building and a new business, they're required to build a dumpster enclosure. What we would typically do with a new building, new development, the dumpster enclosure would match the architectural materials and style of the building, and we would landscape it. It's just good planning practice and it looks very good. Some of the existing buildings and businesses within the community do not have dumpster enclosures. Some of them have added dumpster enclosures. And what we find, you know, in, in our many issues with code enforcement is that, people pay a lot of attention to signs, people pay a lot of attention to architectural materials in the front of the building, don't necessarily pay as much attention to the back of the building. And some of the backs of the buildings are, for example, very visible at certain locations, corner properties, for example, and also, you know, not forgetting some of the properties that are highly visible from the, from the metro line as well. So what we've noticed, we do get complaints on garbage, we do get complaints on dumpsters, you know, garbage not being picked up. A number of issues that the reason, you know, this proposal is in front of you is that I think this is something that is certainly worthy of discussion. Personally, my point of view, we had a similar proposal and program in another community I worked in. And it, there was no real incentive to it, other than working with businesses, explaining the program. I think really the only incentive was there wasn't a permit fee along with it, and the permit was certainly expedited. And what was pleasantly nice about it, it was in a downtown area with a train station. And a lot of businesses, we put them in contact, we had a number of companies that gave, you know, gave us proposals to construct these enclosures. We were able to put them in contact, they were able to pick, you know, which company they used. And pleasantly enough, a lot of those businesses took the city's direction in terms of improving their properties. So that's why this is here for discussion this evening. I really, I think the key questions I have, is this something that the, the committee's interested in, A? And then B, is this something, you know, the city would like to incentivize? You know, whether that's through, you know, expedited permits, no permit fees, or anything above that. Thank you.
Mayor.
Mr. Cage, basically, this is a long time coming, brought this up six years ago and it was shot down. You drive up and down Irving Park, you see garbage dumpsters from Irving Park, from one end of town to the other. If you're suggesting waiving the permit fees, I mean, I don't have a problem with that personally myself. I mean, so this doesn't look like it's a moneymaker for the city, we're trying to railroad all the businesses and they're doing something. But all we're trying to do is beautify the city. I, I don't have a problem with that.
Alderman Jacob.
Is this going to be a voluntary thing, or is, are we going to actually change the code and it's going to be required?
Well, it, it, new buildings, it is required. So really what we're talking about this evening is existing commercial properties, we're not talking about residential at this time. Really, that's, you know, we would, certainly I would prefer for it to be a voluntary program. I'm not looking to, you know, make people do it unless they want to. I'm just looking for a way to provide an incentive, you know, whether that's through, you know, no permit fee or having a list of contractors who'd be willing to do this for, you know, build an enclosure for a reasonable price. I'm looking for a way to work with the businesses to encourage them to improve their properties. But it's not something I'm looking to mandate at this time.
Go ahead.
I mean, if we don't, I mean, I want to work with the businesses too, but I also want to have to clean up the city, especially, you know, and where there's residential around it. I mean, if we did the code, couldn't we say you have to do this within two years? So, you know, not to put any financial burden on somebody and do some, would actually make it a requirement and not just a voluntary thing?
I mean, we have a number of different options. This hasn't been decided. We could, for example, make it a voluntary program, see how many businesses take us up on the voluntary option, come back and revisit it. We can make it a mandatory program. There are a number of different options. In, in, you know, in one respect, you know, I, I think of, you know, another topic for discussion, the annexation. You know, you try voluntary first, just to see, you know, how many people are interested in it. Obviously, we want to be business friendly, but I certainly understand your point. We, we are trying to improve the city. And I think maybe it's, you know, I'm just thinking as I'm talking, which is always interesting, is that if we try the voluntary first, for example, and we really don't get a lot of feedback or a lot of positive feedback, maybe we revisit it and look at the mandatory option. Just an idea.
Mayor.
Again, six years ago, this was brought up, and it was kind of the same thing, we'll ask businesses, you know, try and keep it tidy and whatnot. It's only gotten worse instead of better. Unless you make this mandatory, I'm telling you right now, and I'll, if you want to give a 12 months or 18 months or something, you know, just to make it palatable. Didn't work six years ago, and it looks worse now than it did then.
I mean, just, just to follow up on, on both of your points, you know, one other option is, you know, an amortization period like we have in the sign ordinance, which, you know, does provide a timeframe. That's another option we can look into as well.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here's a couple of issues I have at this. Is there going to be a standard of what type of closures we're going to propose? Because I, I'll tell you right now, if you tell me I got to put a dumpster enclosure, I'm going to go to get some snow fencing, fencing in it, it's my closure. I mean, really, because we don't have a, a standard, okay? So my question is, I agree with, and I talked to Mr. Cage about this, I agree that maybe we should do outreach to them and try to find some contractors that do enclosures and forward that into these people, these businesses and say, here, we did homework for you already. Why don't you contact this guy, he does closures, and maybe we could help them out instead of them trying to find someone? Because I'll tell you one thing, if you tell me I got to put a dumpster enclosure, I'm going to go with the snow fence because you ain't going to put standards on what type. It could be brick, it could be that fencing with the, I mean, if you're going to do that, you might well pick a style and do it uniform. Because I'll take the easiest way out, I'll go with the snow fence. That's a dumpster enclosure, the way I look at it.
Alderman Messina.
Right, so I, I agree 100%. I mean, I think the biggest problem is the consistency of look in the city blows my mind. If this is made mandatory, it has to be consistent, maybe one or two options. My question though, was have we thought about maybe building this into the facade program? Or a separate program? To Nunesio's point, excuse me, Mayor's point, I, I feel like i-if it is voluntary, not, not happening. And I feel like it needs consistency, and if there's an incentive, then maybe it is an application process where we do it.
Mike, Alderman Mike, is it?
No, he just stole my thunder.
Mayor.
When, when we first spoke at, snow fencing was never an option. We're, we're definitely going to have some kind of criteria because snow fencing, I mean, I think chain link fencing with some type of screening, that's one option. I saw you've got the picture in here, that's another option. At work, where I work, they've got basically brick pillars and they've got aluminum, like an aluminum facade in between the pillars. Snow fencing was never an option. That, we definitely need a criteria. There, there was no way we're going to make this without a criteria. No, 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 no. Well, we have to have the discussion, we have to, that's why we're having the discussion. Snow fences definitely aren't.
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
I, I definitely would like to see this be a mandatory thing as well and put a time limit, limit of 12 months on it and put a criteria also that it can't be a snow fence. I mean, it has to be definitely some kind, kind of criteria. Otherwise, the mayor said it, and I just know several businesses, they're just not going to do it. If you just say, oh yeah, if you want to do it, they're not going to do it. So I really think this needs to be a mandatory thing.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah, I'll concur. I think it absolutely has to be mandatory. I, I would make it at least two years. One year would be hard for us to get this off the ground in, in a 12 month period. I would like to tie it into the facade program too, to add some financial incentive. And to the mayor's point, we need to develop some kind of standard of what the bare minimum is. So there should be some, to Alderman Messina's point, some blending with the building, I think. If you have a brick building, you know, we don't want plastic fencing. If you have a frame building, so a frame enclosure of some sort would be acceptable. You know, something in keeping, and, and that's why I think if you tie it into the facade program, that has more of a review component of it, if you will. And if we develop some minimal standards along with that, I think that that will go a long way to serve, to do what it is we want to do. And to get people to put the carrot out there, I don't know what the number is, is the number $2,000 grant that we would give. And some people might come in and tie this into the grant program, do stuff in the parking lot and the lighting also. So maybe we just leave it the way it is and, and be more open to an enclosure in the grant process under parking lot and lighting and add garbage enclosures. And then, like I say, enact the ordinance and, and give it a two year timeframe.
My question is, how are we going to handle the enclosures that are already out there? They're all banged up. That's another issue.
Right, that's, that's an excellent question. Just to, I think certainly, you know, we'd have to analyze what's out there. We want, we would obviously want to bring in any enclosures that have issues in terms of they've been hit by trucks or they're in disrepair, we want to, would want to bring those into the program as well. And then just responding to Alderman Woods, you know, in terms of the facade improvement grant, we have had contact with, I have had contact with a number of businesses that are looking to do exactly what you said, which is make improvements to the building and tying improvements to screening, mechanical equipment, dumpster enclosures. So I think that's an excellent point. It's really coming up with a set of standards and fine tuning it and then, you know, perhaps bringing it back to you guys just to see if, you know, we're going in the right direction.
Mayor.
Ed, this picture you have here, I mean, and I know I sent you the email, they had different colors. So did you by chance call these guys, just out of curiosity, how much one of those panels costs? Because they can match any color brick. Did you by chance?
No, I did not contact them. There's, there's a number of different, you know, there's a number of different options, I think.
Right.
From my perspective, the intent was to bring it forward to committee, see if you're amenable to it. Throw away, you know, there's a number of different ways of building these enclosures, whether it's, you know, to match the buildings. I think what we would try to do is get a lot more information, so you guys can take a look at what sort of costs we're talking about, what kind of materials. I mean, obviously, from staff standpoint, we want something that is attractive, something that matches with the building, but also something that's pretty resilient to traffic, to trucks, and, you know, just to the weather as well.
Well, because like a number was thrown out, $2,000, maybe one of these enclosures, let's say 10 by 10 or 15 by 15, whatever, is only $3,000. We should at least have some numbers that.
Well, it would be like the grant program, 50% up too. That's why I say if we throw it into the verbiage of the grant program, 2,000 would be the max or 3,000 would be the max, we'd pay half up to the max.
Right, the problem, just one problem, with the facade program, we only allow so much money. So let's say we get three businesses that want facade program and use up all the money. Then we're telling these guys, in two years, you got to have your garbage enclosure, they might not be able to. We only have so much money. I mean, that's why I'd at least like to know how much money we got and, you know, just some numbers.
Yes, we, we'll absolutely bring those back.
You know, 15 by 15, 20 by 20, just out of curiosity, if we could, a couple of simple questions.
Alderman Sorrentino.
The facade program, if you turn this into a beautification program, and if you're going to do this over a period of time, and we're going to offer some cash incentive, maybe the sooner they do it, the greater. maybe the sooner they do it, the greater the incentive. And the other thing for consistency is if the city logo was on the side of each of these enclosures. I know it's on garbage dumpsters, but it's just a thought for something to get out there, but the idea of more money, the quicker they do it, could get them to jump, especially when they're going down by the trains, you know, it's an ugly sight. Don't want you seeing down there. Let's leave that open. Another can of worms?
Now, if we're gonna offer incentives to the new dumpsters, the existing businesses that have to fix their enclosures right now, are they gonna come to the city and say, how about us? I mean, how's that gonna work?
Well, I think what, certainly what I'm hearing is that the committee's interested in this program, but what you guys need is some more information from staff in terms of, you know, costs, estimates, what the program would entail. And I think what we would do is, after this meeting, I'd certainly do my homework, contact some of these companies, bring back some more information so you can provide direction, you know, we're going in the right direction or, you know, maybe just focus on certain areas, just so that we've got the information and we can kind of hone down what we're actually talking about and what we're looking at.
Okay. Alderman Woods.
I was gonna try to speed this up. I'll make a motion to give staff direction to, one, develop some kind of standards for the enclosures, develop some verbiage for the incentives and address the concerns that the councils had up here, both for existing enclosures as well as the new enclosures. And then look at some sample verbiage for what that ordinance would read or sound like when we put it together.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Do I have a second?
Second, thank you.
The other, I was going to add a little something to that motion.
Well, you can add now.
The other thing is, I would like to add to that motion that the staff go ahead and contract, I mean, contact some enclosure people and figure out how much it's going to cost to do these things. And maybe we give these businesses, oh, by the way, here's a price tag. It's going to give them, give them some idea of what these businesses are going, what it's going to cost them. At least give them a picture of what it could cost them. So I would like that added to the motion.
Mayor.
Before we do that, I've had this discussion with the city attorney once about having a list, you know, people can call up, you know, and the city, well, that's not a, the attorney says that's not a good practice or there's some legal, like we're swaying the business to use certain vendors. I think the attorney would frown upon that.
We would strongly follow the attorney's direction. I mean, we never recommend.
Only if we agree with it.
No, but I know I've had this conversation with him and I'm like, why can't we just get a few people this way, you know, got good plumbers, whatever, so we can recommend. He goes, you cannot get into there, you know, you know, he starts giving the legal jargon. But I would bring that up to him, just a question. Next staff meeting.
Yeah, we'll be very careful, but we'll get an idea of what we're talking about for different levels of the enclosure. So next time we have a discussion, we're, we have that information for you guys.
Alderman Jacob.
I mean, I think that we really need to move forward with this and move swiftly. I don't want this to be six months from now. I think within, as soon as we could get something written, bring this back. And I'd also like to maybe see an 18-month. I think two years is too long. Personally, I think 18 months would be better. That's my opinion, though.
Mr. Murmurs.
Just for clarity, just so we're sure, a big part of this is the voluntary versus required. So we're all in units of an acquired as part of the package we're gonna bring forward, because that's a lot of legwork from the attorney to draft some of the stuff. Well, we're gonna, he's gonna talk about language to make it a requirement.
We need a consensus on that, on mandatory.
Yeah, that's what the motion was.
That's what the motion was.
Mandatory, yeah.
And we were thinking September committee.
September.
That's too long? Okay, because that's only like two committee meetings, so.
That's fine.
So we gotta need a
We got a motion, we got a second.
Second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is the draft annexation letter with proposed deadline and incentives. Cage.
Yes, per prior discussion on annexation, voluntary and mandatory, staff was directed to produce with the city attorney, a draft annexation letter with some deadlines and incentives. That's in, within your packet. Probably the key, the key elements from staff standpoint are really the timeframe. You know, obviously, we put a timeframe in the letter just kind of as a placeholder. Want to see where the committee stands on the timeframe, so I think that's one key element. And then the other key element, letters A, B, C, and D, which are the, you know, the annexation fee is A. B is the tap-on fees, which is, you know, what staff put in the initial, put in the initial draft. And then there was feedback from council to add C and D, which essentially are some incentives for this program. So that's what we have in front of you in terms of the letter. Any feedback you could provide in terms of the deadline and then the proposed incentives would be very helpful. Thank you.
Alderman Mike, Mr. Smarsky.
I'd like to add some to board four, they're tore down a house there and put up a parking lot. That's all unincorporated there, correct?
Sorry, was that Alderman?
The people, I'm talking about the annexation. I got people, you said you got perks and, you know, ultimatums for people that want to annex in?
Correct.
Well, the people that live in the unincorporated area there, in the industrial park, there are some homes. Would one of the perks be able to get those people privacy fences? I don't know who's putting up that parking lot, but it looks like it's Tatemco. And the people that live there aren't too happy, but I can't do anything for them because they're governed by DuPage County and Addison Township, not Wooddale.
I mean, it's, and just to respond in terms of, I mean, that's something we can look into.
Might want to look into something like that because that's all industrial there and that's what they look in the back door now.
You know, just a quick answer, I mean, there's a number of items that go into annexation. It's a complicated issue. I think there's certain items that are gonna come up in, you know, in certain neighborhoods around certain properties that, you know, and that's a good example that we will have to look at. So it's gonna be an ongoing process. And really, you know, the direction that staff heard loud and clear at the last meeting was to bring it back with deadlines and incentives so we can kind of keep the process moving. That's why we're here. And I think, you know, we'll certainly take the comments this evening on board and try and finalize the letter if the committee's comfortable with it.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on that. The situation that Alderman Smarsky brought up is precisely why we want to be more proactive and getting these things incorporated into the city, you know, so that we have more control over what's happening around our borders. This is exactly what's happening and a lot of neighbors that would probably want to annex in are being, you know, beat up a little bit by the county allowing different uses that wouldn't be allowed under the city ordinances. So in talking with Ed and going over this, I mean, I think we all agree that without the incentive, most people are gonna sit back. Nobody wants to put out the money. So this has been an issue that's been talked about within the city for 20, 30 years that I know of with no success at all, really, or very limited success. So unless we're really, really proactive and trying to get that in, and that's why we came up with the incentive program that we came up with. So it's almost a no-brainer. If the people are gonna incur any expense in the, in the distant future, or not too distant future, I mean, on their well or their septic, it only makes sense for them to accept this grant program. And this is the kind of carrot before the storm. So we're gonna push the issue and if you want to enter early, you're pretty much, by waiving the fees and the costs and having the grant, gonna enter the game almost at zero cost if it's done correctly. And I think that that's our, maybe not our only, but certainly our best shot at getting some traction and getting people to move in.
Thank you.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I agree. We need to start getting these properties in because we got, I guarantee you, there's a septic field on our corporate area Elmhurst Street that's failing in county and I don't see nothing being done on that. My question is, to this council, we asked them to draft a letter for some incentives and that, we aren't going the whole entire unincorporated offices.
No, 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 no.
I just want to know where these letters and what areas are we focusing on first? I mean, I, that was my intention. I don't want to do the whole thing.
Mr. Murmurs.
I think the game plan that we kind of touched on in the last meeting here is A through M. Send letters out to everybody within areas A through M and then just see what feedback we get, but focus on those one or two pocket areas, not necessarily that whole, a whole big street within area A through M.
Mr. Wesley.
The follow-up is that if there's three houses there and two agree to it, and this is probably a legal question, you could force another one in to annex in. That's gonna be a legal question because I think you could because you're joined in, you're surrounded by Wooddale and I think you could force them in, if that's the case. I thought if we joined Wooddale, Mayor, could you help us out on that? I thought if they touch a
Go ahead, Mayor.
Our assistant attorney, Art Woods, could probably.
Good, Mr. Murmurs.
I would just say that may or may not be the case. I don't think we're here to discuss the legalities of the annexation. We're here to get direction. And if you like the letter, we'll send it out, get feedback, and then come back to you again. We just want to move along the process.
Mayor.
Ed, the $5,000, I mean, that's to cover the connection fees, the lateral lines from the homes to our water lines, correct?
Correct.
I mean, what if, so if we put that amount in there, everybody's gonna have a $5,000 lateral line instead of a 2,500 or 3,000. I don't know, maybe, maybe they're more than 5,000. I'm not an expert, maybe.
They're more than 5,000.
Yeah.
So if everybody came in at 5,000, that's, that would be great. Now we'll get that guy's name and I'll use him instead of the guy's I use.
That's a question I had. I don't know what lateral lines cost. The question is, how many homes are we talking about? So if we're, I think, I don't remember the number. I had this number. How many homes are we talking about right now? About 100, 50?
From the A through M, it's approximately about 50, plus or minus.
At 5,000 apiece.
Correct.
Okay, so it's, I mean, that's an extensive number we gotta look at on how we're gonna work this out. That's, you know, because now, you know, we're talking about helping our garbage enclosures. Now we're talking about here, next thing you know, we're spending a 3/4 million dollars. So this might be a good discussion item at strategic planning coming up so we can figure some of this stuff out, get some numbers, so we know exactly what we're talking about. And I understand, if you do this, basically the letter says, if you volunteer to come in, this is what we're gonna pay for. Nowhere does it say that naturally, if you don't volunteer, the next step is we're gonna come in and annex you in anyways.
Alderman Jacob.
Along the lines that the mayor was going, I mean, if I'm all for this, but we do have to put some kind of cap on it of maybe 20 homes or 25 homes, so we have a dollar value set. Well, I don't, I don't think everybody's gonna come in all at once or want to.
Mr. Murmurs.
The exact count's 37.
Thank you.
Mr. Woods.
I was gonna say, all those things are good points and good questions. Again, like the garbage enclosure, that ain't gonna happen in one year. It's probably over two years. And if we're talking 37, 40 homes, that's only 20 homes a year. I'm sure something that we've tried for, to your point, Mayor, at least six years. You know it's been longer, so fighting that we'll figure out a way to get it done. And it'll probably be a two and a half to three-year project, you know, all said and done to get people in. Because when a couple of people do it, that'll, you know, kind of energize the program and the neighbor will then go, hey, I gotta do some work on my well. That's gonna cost me three grand. I might as well do this.
Alderman Smarsky. Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Smarsky, some of those properties are within that 60 acres that we can't touch. I mean, depending where they're at, some of them we can't touch because it's over 60 acres. But I did have a follow-up on this. When we do this annexation, are we gonna require water and sewer? Because
Yes.
My next thing is, we have, I forget, I think it was 130, 140 that are just hooked up to sewer. While we're cleaning this stuff up, we should clean up that sewer stuff as well. And everybody who's just on sewer only should be hooked up to the water and there might need to be a voluntary, you know, agreement of some type of cost by the city to get these people all hooked up.
Mr. Murmurs.
The two questions, Alderman Smarsky, there's a good map of all the listing of all the areas in the 275 in the packet. And then I would say the mayor has a wise idea and that would be staff's intent to do both.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I will tell you, when I bought my house, I was unincorporated at the time and I annexed into Wooddale. And I will tell you what it's going to cost roughly. This was years ago, about 30 years ago. It cost me to cap my well, collapse a septic tank, which they would have to do by state law, okay? It cost me a little over $15,000 to annex into the city Wooddale. Now, that price might went up by now, but that's what it cost. So these incentives that are being offered here, I think is pretty decent. If you were to offer these, even if I was unincorporated, you probably would have jumped on it. So I agree with these incentives, but it's still gonna cost a homeowner a good, probably eight grand, maybe nine grand. And you might not get them, but unless you hire one plumber to do them all, and that's what we did down there and that's how we got so cheaper, it would have been more. Because there was five houses in that ward.
Alderman Smarsky.
President John Forrest, we had a ordinance that if you did annex in, you did not have to hook up to water immediately. You were able to use your well until either one failed or went dry. And you weren't about to repair it for big people. That's still offered to them if they so choose.
Well, I, my thought, and, you know, please jump in, I get the, you know, the impression from the committee. And certainly, my personal point of view is that if we're trying to annex people into the city and they're willing to do that under a voluntary system, we would want them to hook up to both water and sewer, unless, you know, the direction is different from the committee.
In their state that they ever come in, I think it says they are able to use their water and sewer, one water until one or the other breaks.
I think it's, yeah, it's gonna be, depending on each individual property, you know, whether they have an issue or not. I think, you know, my, my point of view is that if, you know, if we're providing incentives to bring property is that if, you know, if we're providing incentives to bring properties into the community, then they should have access to, to both. If we need to modify that ordinance, that's an excellent point, and I think that's something we will take a look at. And if we need to modify it, and the committee's comfortable with that approach, then that's something that we should do.
Alderman Jacob.
I would like to reiterate what the mayor had said, and while we're doing this, take care of those other 137 homes, and give them some type of timeframe that they have to hook up to, they can't just be hooked up to water or sewer.
Mayor.
Well, that's why I brought it up, because otherwise, these 37 homes might all decide, oh, okay, well, yeah, we'll do that, but we're going to stay on our wells, and then we're just going to create another problem.
Yes.
Want to get rid of the 130 that we have, get them all on the same page, everybody, and if we have to, we offer those same incentives to get them hooked up, just so it, it's clean.
I agree.
Otherwise, we, we still have all these little deals all over town, it's ridiculous.
It's a good point.
So we're all in consensus to go ahead with the letter?
I am. I'll second.
Okay. Any more questions? Is that second?
You making the motion?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, five items to consider for future meetings, repeat offenders for the grass, that's on July 23rd, variation request, 171 Pine Street, that's also July 23rd, and then, and also a variation request, that's 396 West Irving Park Road, that's also July 23rd, and Clock Tower, it's coming up August 13th, and the last one is additional ornamental signage bid, and that's coming up in September. Any other items to consider in the future? Need a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We got adjourned.
Call the Public Works to help Safety and Insurance Committee, may the minute take care of same people present, any motion approved, a minute for May 14th, 2015, that is, that is my motion.
Yeah.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reporting recommendation approval purchase of canine amount not to exceed 112,000 dollars. I'll make that motion to go ahead and approve the dog, the dog is ready to retire. 112,000 or 12,000?
12,000.
12,000, I'm sorry, 12,000 to buy the dog.
Second. I'll second that.
Second, any questions?
Yeah.
All in favor? Oh, no, roll call, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Smarsky.
Yes.
I'll also make the motion to approve the contract with the X, R. Company for organic gravel crossing enforcement, that is my motion to approve the contract.
Second.
I have a second. Greg, I, I have a second, do you have a question? Go ahead.
Chief, on, on doing this with upgrades, since we are upgrade, are redesigning that whole intersection, are they going to have to do this twice, or is it, if they do it now, is it going to be fine?
What we would do with, with this approval is go to Xerox and coordinate with, also with HR Green as to when the construction is happening on Irving Park Road. If, if the current system is able to stay up past the current expiration of the contract, we might look to do a short-term, three-to-four month extension until they start tearing up that area. Certainly, I don't want them to do it twice, and I'm sure they're not going to want to pay to do it twice. So this would be, if, if council gives approval, we'll go to them and really finalize some of these details, including the terms, and then I just want to make sure, is council interested in doing both approaches for the, for the foreseeable future, so.
Any other questions? Mayor, please.
When you say both approaches, you mean east and west, right? Right now, we're only going.
Right.
Westbound, talking about adding the eastbound.
Correct.
Any other questions, concerns? Is the motion a second? All in favor? Aye. Is that it?
Opposed?
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Nay.
Two nays.
Take a roll call.
Take a roll call, because no one wants to answer yes or no, so let's do a roll call.
Just like we just did.
No, because half the people didn't say yes or no. Do a roll call, please.
Okay, Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
No.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
No.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Smarsky.
Yes.
Motion carries. I didn't consider future meeting curfew ordinance for July 23rd, Front Street One Way for July 23rd, any other? Mr. Jacob.
I, I talked to the chief about this before, it seems like the speed sign, the speed sign that we have is working really well, and he said there is like a downgraded version that it's a lot cheaper, I'd like to bring up and possibly discuss on buying a couple more of those, because I know, I'm sure the chief would agree that several aldermen have asked for those in their ward on certain streets.
Yeah, they certainly have been popular, and we've been able to show that, we can go further into depth with it, but basically, the sign takes readings before it even displays a speed, and we've shown effectiveness on about 70% of cars in slowing them down, so if that's something you want to explore, I could come back with pricing, currently, it's not budgeted in this year, but that would be something that we could bring back, and.
Could buy it this year, not budget.
To add to, Alderman Jacob, though, can you get something that will give us data on that as well, so we can do reporting, you guys can deploy accordingly?
I can come back with the certain pricing options and what level of data, you know, we could have the main one that provides the mobile data, and then we could always look at a little bit smaller sign for general speed awareness at a couple spots, and then make sure we can still get some data from that that we need to, but maybe it doesn't have as many bells as whistles, so I could come back with different options on that.
Mr. Jacob.
I know Alderman Wesley said that it's not in the budget, but maybe we could find some money in the budget, if he brings it back, at least some prices.
We just did it once to garbage.
Turn on a bicycle.
Go ahead.
Will that new analyst we're hiring be able, be able to look at that, that data for us?
I'm sorry.
That new analyst that you proposed to hire, would that person be able to analyze that data?
Yes, certainly, we, right now, we have an officer and a sergeant that kind of coordinate the different locations, as we get a lot of requests throughout town to put it in different spots, and we get regular reports, I think you recently had one from, from your ward that was done, that showed some of the details, but yeah, the, the program does a lot of analysis for us, but it's certainly something that we can use to target our enforcement too, so.
Okay, I have no problem coming with prices, keep in mind, any in the budget, I know, Mr. Jacob, you brought up, we could find the money, okay? We just talked about dumpster enclosures, we talked about annexation agreement, incentives, we just, we approved amendment, and we cut projects, we cut an Edgewood sidewalk, which is a safety concern in our ward, we, we, we cut projects, spend 2.5 million dollars that we have to come out of the city budget to make the intersection, it, to me, it ain't open checkbook. If it ain't in the budget, if it ain't in budget, I, I don't wait till next year. We got a water main, flooding issue over in that ward that needs to be addressed, I'm sorry, it's going to have to, I'll have them bring it back, but there ain't going to be no money, go ahead.
You pointing to me?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, just making sure. I, I, with all due respect, I disagree with you, I feel like if someone comes here and says, hey, people are speeding down my street, and my kid gets hit by a car, are you going to tell them, sorry, we have a water main that's broken?
Then put my sidewalks in, safety.
I, I'm sorry, but I think speeding's a little bit more important than a new sidewalk.
Okay, go ahead.
Can we, just beyond the public safety, can we get like any grants for that, for those digital signs? Is there any, any grants out there?
We'll certainly look, I know the recent ITEP funding was for the intersection improvements, but, you know, we're always looking for grants, I can certainly look for that.
And also, also, I know these are temporary, there's a lot of people in my ward that would like to see one permanently put there, because they really help, so we can consider that when we do have money in the budget.
So this is a future discussion item, so we can, chief will get all the information for us and bring it forward.
Right.
No, next, by directional antenna ordinance, on the back page.
Okay. Another one, ordinance, July or August?
And that'll be August, we're trying to develop that policy at the county level, so.
Okay.
That'll be August.
Any motion adjourned?
Go ahead.
Question? With the, recently I was reading about the 9/11 funding being extended, does that have any effect on our plans or speed or trajectory of what we're doing?
No, it basically solidified the fact that we do have to consolidate, it hasn't affected our timelines, but the new statute is basically saying by 2017, I believe it's July, we have to have consolidated by then, our timeline is more in the next few months, now that the city has signed the IGA with Addison, and then the DuPage 911 Board, you know, hopefully, they will actually get a little bit of increased funding to be able to continue to fund some of the programs they have, and the airtime for our radios. So yeah, that was certainly a comprehensive package, but it hasn't accelerated our timelines, but it solidified that we have to consolidate, so we, we knew that was going to have to happen.
Right, I mean, it sounded like it just eased it off a little bit, that we don't have to be so, I mean, it still has to be done, but, but it sounds like we, we can breathe, we're not under the gun completely, but I think the course we're taking is the right course.
That's correct, and we did, the last two weeks, we just started having operational meetings with Addison and Itasca, so that's a weekly meeting that, once we determine that everything's in place, including the communications, and the ETSB board says it's time to go, it's ready to go, that's when we'll switch over to Addison.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? I'll make a motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.